It is six thirty PM on October twenty eighth, two thousand twenty four, twenty twenty four. I would like to call to order the finance meeting for Lisle Community School District two oh two. First up, is there any public comment, online or otherwise?
We did not have any public comments, no.
Excellent. The next item on the agenda is the minutes from the September twenty third meeting. Does anyone have any questions or changes about the minutes? All right, so everyone agrees that minutes accurately reflect the meeting? Excellent. All right, so item four is the snow removal services bid. Information can be found under item four of the finance committee packet. Mr. Wilkinson, if you would.
Thanks. Everest Snow Removal has been our snow removal provider for the last five years. Our current bid with Everest actually did allow for one more rollover year for the twenty four, twenty five school year. But their bid that they submitted the last time back in twenty twenty two actually had what I would call below market rates for our elementary school. They brought to my attention that when they submitted their bid for the elementary school, they actually used the map of the Meadows School. They pulled it from Google and it still showed the Meadows Building instead of the new Lisle Elementary School that we had. I want to be clear that I did include within the bid documents the correct map for Lisle Elementary School, but they decided to go grab their own maps and ended up submitting on what would be a much smaller parking lot. And so they still, for the first year of the bid, they honored that pricing and then they actually honored that pricing again for the first rollover year. But as I was talking to them this year about renewing, they were no longer comfortable honoring that pricing, so it forced me to go out and reopen the bid process. I did publish an advertisement for bids in the Daily Herald. I also sent emails to eighteen different snow removal providers. I'd gotten lists from other business managers and obviously we have our list of who's bid in the past. And so we sent notices to all of those providers. Seven bidders ultimately ended up requesting bid documents and three vendors ended up submitting bids. Kind of within the bid documents themselves, we kept the structure pretty much the same. It's based on per push, so every time they show up, every time they do a snow removal or plow, we get billed for that kind of in three inch increments. And then also there's a charge for per salt applications. One thing that was a little bit that we added to the bid this year that was new in talking with Jeff Hinton, our coordinator of buildings and grounds, we actually added what's called a straight push. A lot of times during the day, snow might accumulate, but we already have the parking lots full, we have cars in those parking lots, and so all we really need is just the aisles to be plowed for the truck to just zip around and clear those aisles so that the cars can get out when school ultimately is dismissed or if there's any traffic throughout the day. And so we added that as something that would hopefully be a little bit lower rate since we didn't need a complete plow of the entire parking lot and that can happen after hours when the staff and the students aren't in attendance. Also, I made the option to do four rollover years so we could ultimately have a five-year contract instead of having to go through this process every three years. And so those annual increases would be limited to either CPI or five percent, whichever is lower, so there would be caps on those rollover years. And so kind of based on the assumptions that we use in evaluating the pricing, you know, we think that about fifty percent of the time it'll be just salt and then thirty percent will probably be less than three inches. They usually come out, they don't let it accumulate too much, and so it's usually that lower tier that we end up getting charged for along with the salt. And then also including that new straight push, we kind of had to estimate maybe ten percent of the time it'll be that straight push. But we factor all that in and looking at the pricing that is submitted. And ultimately, the Langton Group out of Woodstock became the lowest bidder based on the numbers that were submitted. You know, I did, you know, hearing that they were from Woodstock, I'm thinking, gosh, that's kind of far away, is that going to be okay? And so I talked to the account manager that would be on our account, and he assured us they already have runs in this direction, that's part of the reason they were attracted to Lisle, is they have trucks that go right past here. And so they just, they leave earlier, they come this way, they've already got other accounts. And so he was not concerned at all about being able to service the district. Also, all the references they provided, they were all school districts, and I reached out to three of those school districts, they all had very positive things to say, that they were great, they were very responsive, and so seemed like a very responsible bidder. And if you looked at the pricing, while Everest was pretty close to them, the other provider was significantly higher. And so based on the bids, the cost will potentially increase about twenty percent. Primarily, that's due to what I mentioned with Lisle Elementary School, those rates will be going up. When you actually look at the salt rates that they provided across the buildings, those are actually a little bit lower. And a lot of times, salting is where a lot of the cost is, so that cost actually came down, which is encouraging. And then obviously, we're hoping to save some money on those straight pushes and not having to do full plows and incorporate those expenses. Obviously, costs can fluctuate year to year, we never know what the snow is going to do unless someone here has a crystal ball and/or a very accurate farmer's almanac, although I hear the farmer's almanac isn't as accurate as you might think. So we are ultimately recommending approval of Langton Group for our snow removal services, and that's included for approval in the board packet.
Any further questions? No? Excellent, thank you. Item five is the school maintenance project grant for fiscal year twenty twenty five. That information can be found under item five A five of the regular board meeting packet. Once again, Mr. Wilkinson.
So there's another funding for the school maintenance project grant that's available. This is a dollar-for-dollar state matching grant, up to a maximum of fifty thousand dollars to, for any kind of maintenance or upkeep of our buildings for capital projects associated with that. Lisle's actually been, I think we've gotten the grant about four times in the last five years, so it's totaled approximately two hundred thousand dollars towards some of these projects, which is great. As I mentioned, this year, the funding is about fifty million dollars that's available. And the application that we are going to submit to the ROE, once the board authorizes it, will be for fifty thousand dollars for our HVAC replacement work that's coming up at the junior high school for the commons and the auditorium. The work is a, what they call a permanent improvement project. I know sometimes in the past, we've done life safety projects which get a little bit higher priority, but our current life safety projects for the junior high weren't a high enough dollar amount to get that full grant. And we've historically always gotten these grants, so I feel comfortable doing a HVAC project. And we're estimating the cost of that at about four hundred and forty thousand. Obviously, the board needs to reserve those funds as part of this authorization process. And then assuming we're awarded the grant as we have in past years, those dollars must be expended within two years of award. And so the administration is recommending that the board approve the resolution that's included in the packet to authorize us to submit those documents to the ROE and reserve the funds in the capital projects fund for these projects.
Thank you very much. Let's see here, we have item six is the facility plan presentation. That information can be found under item five A six of the regular board meeting packet.
Okay, so every October, the committee, we sit down and we review the district's facility plan. The facility plan, it really looks at our capital projects that are on the horizon and some of the needs that are at each of our facility, provides a roadmap for our summer construction projects and possibly when they might occur. We try and put them in a timeline so we can kind of plan those out for the next five, ten years. For those of you that have been on the board for a few years, some of this stuff is going to look relatively familiar. Things don't necessarily change significantly from one year to the next, but the plan does kind of evolve over time. Things might move from one year to the next as the picture becomes a little bit clearer. I do apologize for some of the formatting issues. If you were looking at the facility plan over the weekend, you're probably like, why did he put those numbers there and why is this covered up and this is really strange? And so apparently, taking the PDF document and putting it into Board Books causes some weird things. I'm like, how did I miss that? How did I not see that? And sure enough, the original PDF was fine, but what ultimately ended up going into Board Books was not correct. So we fixed that, we actually put it into Google now, and so the presentation itself is linked from a information sheet in your finance committee packet. And so you can now follow along either in Board Books or up on the screen, and hopefully the formatting looks a little bit better so you don't have to try and figure out the columns. Terms of tonight, similar to past years, I'll start by looking at kind of the key things to know what's changed, what hasn't changed, what might be a little bit different, and just kind of touch on the key things from one year to the next. We'll also be looking at the current timeline for addressing the work while also touching just kind of briefly on the facility needs at each of the schools. You've seen this in the past, obviously you were able to look at it over the weekend, so we don't need to spend too much time there. But I always like to remind the committee that we do focus on the larger projects here, so we're talking about items that are over twenty-five thousand dollars, not kind of the day-to-day items that keep our maintenance staff very busy from week in and week out. But I do, with each of the facilities, note on their kind of what the historical costs have been, on average, on an annual basis for each of those facilities, so you can get a general idea of what the annual costs are to keep those facilities operating. Touching on some of the key things, the key changes, the biggest change from this, from last year to this year, is that we've decided to include not only the basic needs, but also the enhancements that we're looking at doing in the district. Obviously, the big enhancements are at the junior high right now and the renovations that we're going through. And so we thought that, you know, while historically we've just focused kind of on the basic needs, adding those renovations would give us a more complete picture of what's on the schedule as well as what those costs are. As I was putting this together, I was like, well, if I don't include those renovations, people might be confused, like, why did we spend four million dollars last year but it's not shown anywhere on this presentation? So that's kind of evolved something that's different this year, and so hopefully that didn't cause too much confusion when you saw the numbers were like, wow, these are a lot more significant than we saw last year. That's because of the project being included in the overall plan. Similar to last year, we are looking at focusing on the junior high over the next four years and then turning our attention back to the high school in year five to potentially look at some of the remaining roof work that's over at the high school. You know, the junior high renovations have also been updated, and we previously were looking at doing that over four summers, but we got quite a bit of work done this past summer. We have a few items we want to take care of this year, and then we're going to kind of pause the activity, wait for the opportunity to issue bonds to fund the rest of that project, while also giving us an opportunity to look at the overall scope of what's left and make sure that we can stay within that twenty million dollar budget. Phase three costs, we've always had within the plan the transformer work, the switchgear work, and then the boiler replacement work, what we're calling kind of overall the central plant work. Our previous estimates were from the life safety survey that Perkins and Will had completed for us, kind of as part of that process, they also looked at the capital improvements in general. And so now that we've been working with our construction manager, we've gotten a better idea of what those items are going to cost. And so that's reflected in this year's projection. It was previously at about two million for all that work, and so that's been increased to our current estimates of just over three million dollars. Phase three also now includes our classroom addition and our science rooms in the plan, that's part of that phase three schedule. We'll look a little bit more at the junior high later in the presentation in terms of what the schedule looks like over the next few summers. Wildy Field is always included on this plan, but we've always put that kind of in that five-to-ten-year window, so it's out on the horizon, we don't have plans to address that immediately, but it's obviously something that we're continue to pay attention to, the condition of the track in particular and what that looks like. And then lastly, we've extended our lease with, we added a lease with SASED, but we've also extended the lease with Chesterton Academy. That lease now runs through twenty twenty seven, and so we shifted the cost to demolish Shezur, if that's what the facility planning committee ultimately decides, and then also obviously cost have escalated with inflation and things like that, so that overall cost to potentially do that has been increased from five hundred to eight hundred thousand Again, as I touched on in the last slide, the presentation now includes the junior high renovations, and so if you're looking back at last year and like that yellow number was just over eight million, why is it now twenty-four million dollars? That's the difference, putting in all of those costs related to the renovations. The FY twenty-five costs in that left-hand column, that's not any new projects, that's other than at the Lisle Senior High. Those costs at the junior high and the elementary school relate to the work that was performed in the summer of twenty twenty four. Something that may be a little confusing sometimes when we look at this is that most of our construction takes place in the summers, and when you perform that work, the costs actually end up impacting two fiscal years. You'll have kind of the start of the project and you'll have some costs in May and June, those end up hitting the previous fiscal year, and then when you finish out the project in July and August and you finish out paying all the bills, those costs end up hitting the following fiscal year. So when we look at FY twenty-five, the five million dollars at the junior high is for the work that we just completed in the summer of twenty twenty four. And then at the elementary school, I know that was a question that some members of the committee had, that's for the office renovations that we completed at the elementary school this summer. Overall, looking at kind of the next five years, the bulk of the work will be at the junior high, and then we'll shift gears, as I mentioned earlier, to looking at the high school there and potentially doing some roof and HVAC work. Just touching on each of these facilities, one thing that was updated this year on the plan is actually, you can see in the roof legend there and also in that diagram, it's now color-coded and it shows primarily just for reference as we move through this, and obviously in the future administrations, future people, they can see when those roofs were actually completed. And so we've done a significant amount of that work in the last ten to twelve years. The blue section is the most recent section, it was completed back in twenty twenty-two. It actually has a thirty-year warranty, so hopefully I won't be here anymore by the time we have to readdress those sections of roofs. The, hopefully I'll still be on this earth, but not actually here anymore. The gray sections were completed in twenty sixteen along with the roof handlers there that are in white. I apologize, by the way, if I'm not getting these colors right, I'm a little bit colorblind. I don't know why the architects do this to me, they all seem so close together, but I'm calling the, I can't even tell from that, but the gray section is that kind of area with the three white rooftop units there in the bottom, that was done in twenty sixteen. And then the tan area there kind of over the commons and kind of that central area was done in twenty twenty-two. So really, the only remaining portions at this point are, touching on the south gym and the receiving area, I'm going to call that the pink sections, and then also the areas from the two thousand and two renovations. At this point, they're all in pretty good shape, I mean, we're not having any major leaks or any problems, but we just want to keep those out kind of on the radar, and at this point, we're tentatively anticipating twenty twenty-eight once the junior high project is done. But again, if we get to that point and it's not necessary, then we'll obviously defer that and look at what other projects might need to be done at that time. One thing, one kind of small project that we're hoping to tackle here at some point is upgrading the auditorium lighting over at the high school, in particular, the house lighting that's kind of over the seating areas and all that kind of stuff. You know, in talking to the department head and maintenance, we think that, you know, based on kind of the additional use that that facility is getting now, putting in some LED lights could really help our energy efficiency. Those are some high wattage lights in there, and so if we can play our cards right and get some incentives from ComEd, we can get some of that work paid for and then realize some pretty significant energy savings from that upgrade. So it's on our list, I don't know if we'll get to it this year or not, but it's definitely something that we're trying to work on when we're not tackling the junior high renovations. Kind of going along with that roof work there for the south gym, there is an R2U there that is still running well but could use some replacement, and in particular, we'd like to add air conditioning at that time. I did receive a question from a board member that is currently on their way here about, hey, it seemed kind of hot in there at a couple events that they've gone to over the fall. Obviously, this fall's been very nice, it's been very warm, but we do not have air conditioning in there, so if the temperature outside is a little bit warmer, it could be a little bit warmer inside the gym itself. And so when we look at replacing that in the future, we will certainly look at the cost of adding air conditioning to that gym as well.
Dave, can I ask just one quick question on that?
Sure.
I just, don't a lot of the schools not have air conditioning in their gyms? I'm just reflecting upon many high school sporting events, and I feel like that's not unique. Are they just difficult to air condition?
Yeah, I think it depends on the, kind of the age of your facility. Obviously, the north gym is a newer gym and that has air conditioning, so that was included as part of the renovations, but yeah, it's not uncommon for a gym to not be air conditioning. But if you're going to go through the effort of replacing it, it's certainly worth exploring, you know, what does that cost look like? Because obviously, in the summers, when it's really warm, we have fans in there, we're trying to kind of cool down the gym and things like that. Sometimes they open up the doors to try and cool things down, so if we can add it at a reasonable cost, it's certainly something to consider.
Yeah. Does that north gym connect to the south gym? I feel like through the top, there's no ventilation exchange.
No connection, no. You know, just touching on this slide right here, kind of the last five years, we've really done a lot of kind of different work over at the high school. We've touched on roofs, we've touched on, we did some renovations for the student services area, we've touched on HVAC and parking lots, so we've touched a variety of different things. And then, you know, kind of looking forward, while we're not looking at doing much here in the next few years as we focus on the junior high, we will kind of get back to that, hey, let's look at replacing some roofs, some HVAC, things along those lines later on as we look further. We'll probably need to, in the next year or two, update some of these cost estimates, especially for the longer-term items. Again, this facility plan kind of originates back to when we did our life safety survey with Perkins and Will ten years ago. They also did, they looked at all facilities and what capital improvements were needed. And so a lot of our pricing is more geared towards from ten years ago. Some of the roof amounts have been updated when we actually did a roof, we use the current amounts for future roofs. But when we go back through that life safety survey process here in the next year, we'll probably ask them to go through and update some of these cost estimates well and get some of that escalation in, because as we all know, prices have definitely increased significantly over the last few years. Turning to the junior high, depending on when that classroom addition ends up taking place, we might have to have the architects update our slide of presidents over there, we might need to add a fifth one if we end up having that additional space. As to which president will end up up there, I guess we're going to find out here in the next week or so, hopefully, as to which face would end up on that slide, but certainly something that we're hoping is in the future for us here shortly. I'm happy to report that we did check off the replacing of the windows here this past summer. That's been a nice upgrade for our junior high. We also worked with the architects, that item that's crossed out, the stairs to the projection room. When they initially did the life safety survey, they thought that egress was necessary to be with the current codes to provide egress to that lighting room up there in the auditorium. But as they looked into it a little bit further, they determined that the exit path from that area can actually travel through the adjacent storage area, so we've put some tape in there, I guess, some luminous and tape and things like that to get it up to the codes. And then once we add that new staircase where the spiral staircase is, that's the first item up there, that'll allow us to meet the necessary requirements. Because adding that stairway there where that projection room was going to be a fairly significant cost, and it's just, it's not used very often, and so the fact that the egress can transfer through that other storage area is great. Also, in the summer of twenty twenty-five, we'll be, the architects are already working on the aisle lighting and making sure that we have that in place to meet the current code requirements. Terms HVAC, obviously, we just talked about with our school maintenance grant, that the cafeteria and the auditorium units are going to be addressed this summer, and then we'll circle back in twenty twenty-seven when we're doing phase three to upgrade any of the additional rooftop units, transformer, switchboards, things like that that need to take place. I did add the main transformer and switchboard to this list. Apparently, they were missing from the list in the past, but they've always been included in the costs, and it's always been something that we were planning on addressing, and it was part of that study that Perkins and Will did. So that's not a new item, it's just a new item on the list. As I mentioned, Wildy Field continues to be on the horizon, we're not addressing it in the short term, but it is something that we'll have to look at in the future, in particular, the track surface and how that will need to be addressed. Currently, it's in pretty good shape, we've been, we had it cleaned a few years ago and it's been resprayed, but we will have to kind of keep that in mind as we move forward. The cost over the last few fiscal years, the renovations costs have kind of slowly been building, we had some design and planning and things like that, so you'll see those costs in the, you know, fiscal years twenty-two and twenty-three, and then we actually started the work here in fiscal year twenty-four with the current summer. And so that's been the bulk of the work that's shown on this table. Terms of going forward, the renovation work is kind of split amongst all these different areas. When we looked at the needs historically, it was divided by area, but when we get into the renovations, it's hard to really break out, well, how much is windows? How much is the unit ventilators that we put in in the classrooms? And so where possible, I've broken out kind of our future plans in terms of the life safety items in the auditorium, some of the HVAC units that we've always been planning for, but kind of anything else to get to that overall budget, I lumped into that renovations column, because it was just too hard to try and break each of those individual items out, it's going to be a part of an overall larger project. The interior piece there, that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's actually the safety and security upgrades that we're looking at doing, which is primarily the putting cameras inside the interior so that the administration has those cameras available for use. This is the same schedule that was presented last month during our discussion of the phase two work. Again, the project right now is looking to be slightly over twenty million dollars. That's based on the costs of the work so far as well as the estimates that the construction manager has provided for the remaining items. One of the things that's nice about the new structure of this plan and the fact that a number of items are being completed at the same time in the summer of twenty twenty-seven is it allows us to go out to bid for the things that we would like in the scope of work, get the bids back, evaluate all those costs, see where we are in our twenty million. If we can do it all, that's great, that's perfect. If for some reason the costs have gone over that twenty million dollar budget, it gives us the opportunity to make some decisions to make sure we keep it in line with budget. And again, as I mentioned, some of that summer twenty twenty-five work that you see here, some of that is split between fiscal years, between fiscal year twenty-five and twenty-six. I know that gets confusing, it's just kind of the nature of how school construction works. Yes, Ms. Simpson?
So that 573, it wasn't on, or I guess, did you allocate it from 2022 and 2023, but it really got done in '24, '25, is what you're saying? Or, because the $34,000 and the 573, I didn't see them on last year's plan, so I just want to make sure I know how that worked out.
Yeah, so as I kind of started tonight's presentation, we were not including the junior high enhancements, the junior high projects in here. And so when we, for this very reason, like, hey, wait, we had some costs related to this, but they're not showing up on the plan, that's why we decided to incorporate all of that in here. So I added that as part of, as part of that transition. And so those first two years are primarily architect fees. You know, they were planning, doing the schematic design, the design development, putting together the bid documents, and so that's all of their costs to get the project going. Looking at the elementary school, the building is still relatively new. It's only five years old, so we really haven't done a lot of planning for what needs to be done there. Kind of over the last five years, there's been a few tweaks and things like that. When we opened the facility, we were getting some sound leaking from our music room, so we did some work to improve the sound dampening there. And then, obviously, we added the office renovations over this past summer. Most of those are here in the fiscal year '25 costs, but in terms of any other projects, any other items at this point, we really don't have anything planned for the elementary school. Again, it's only five years old, so having to replace HVAC and parking lots and roofs is not on the horizon at this point. In the interest of time, I'm not going to dive into Shejir. I did keep this in here primarily just for reference purposes, if anybody's going back to look at the plan. It does show on a couple of these slides the areas that would need to be worked on if we were going to continue to use the building long term. I didn't put any cost estimates or anything like that for what that would look like. I don't anticipate that we would do that work, but it is in here, just so you can kind of see some of the areas that are in need of work if that building was going to be used long term. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we do include potential demolition costs in the overall plan here, in that overall $24 million that you saw earlier. But obviously, before Chesterton leaves in 2027, the Facility Planning Committee will need to be pulled together, and then a discussion will need to take place about what's the plans for that building, that site, et cetera. And so with that, that's the facility plan. I hopefully addressed any of the questions that were received over the weekend. Thank you for submitting those in advance, but if there's any other questions, I will be happy to try and address those.
Just one thought, Dave, you mentioned the Facilities Master Planning Committee. Would it be beneficial to have that group start to meet earlier than 2027? When's the last time they met? It's been since before I was on the board, just to at least start, like, walking some of these different areas. You've got a lot of different stuff going on up there.
I have a feeling it's going to be a part of our Vision 202 that we'll be doing. Probably, we'll talk a little bit more when we get to that item in the regular board meeting, but you're right, it probably does make sense to have that committee work in tandem, knowing that'll probably be part of the discussion. So with that being said, I'll reach out to the committee members, and maybe we can schedule the first couple of meetings at a minimum to walk the building, work with Dave to figure out what some of the costs are, what some of the options, so that when we cover it in Vision 202, we have all that information ready. So I'll send that out.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Let's see here. Item seven is the 2024 financial projection update. That information can be found under Item Seven of the Finance Committee Packet. Once again, Mr. Wilkinson.
So every April, I bring to the committee a detailed financial projection that really looks at kind of the next six years and what's on the horizon. It kind of finishes out the current fiscal year that we're in when it's April, and then also looks at the next five years' time horizon. And at that time, we look at all the assumptions. All the assumptions are reviewed, and they're all updated based on the information that we have available at that time. A few years back, for those of you who might have been on the board at that time, it was brought to kind of the committee that, hey, you know, we look at this in April, but then over a six-month period, there's things that change. You know, we get our, you know, when we're doing it in April, we're still in the middle of a fiscal year, and so by the time we get six months down the road, we've closed out that fiscal year, we've seen where those expenditures have landed, and other things might change. You know, interest rates might change, CPI, new construction, those kinds of things. So it was at that time that the board asked for a mid-year update, which ended up falling here in, I think it's always been October, maybe it was in September at one point. But that typically occurs, like I said, after the fiscal year results are available. And then, we also, we don't look at all the assumptions, we don't update all the numbers, we just kind of look at some of the key assumptions like CPI that really impact our revenues, and then add the information for the facility plan, which, you know, we just talked about that. We just went through those numbers, we made some changes there, and so those also get incorporated into the update. But again, it doesn't look at all the assumptions, but it is an opportunity to kind of take another stab shot and see where the district stands, what trends might be changing, and kind of where the district is headed in the future. And so as we look at our current October projection, kind of against the one that we did in April, it does seem like that probably more so than in the past, there were some kind of things in the landscape that may have been shifting a little bit more than we would see. I mean, typically, there's kind of some consistency from year to year, but it just seemed like as I was working on this update this time around, there were kind of some bigger factors that were going on. And so to help illustrate this, I didn't want to look at each individual year. I mean, it's easy to get lost going year to year to year, but to actually look at kind of like, okay, the next five years, the total amounts, how are those different in October than from when we last looked at this in April? And so I apologize that this wasn't available over the weekend, but it is something that we worked on today and added to the packet, and it shows you kind of what those aggregate dollar amounts and where some of those changes lie. What's interesting is that kind of overall, when you look at the revenues and you look at that bottom line and that last number there in the change column, that $355,000, in aggregate, from one projection to the next, we really didn't see a big change. Like, it was only $355,000, and when you're talking about $215 million in revenue, like, that's such a small number. We really didn't see a big swing in total. But we did, kind of when you start to look at some of those individual components, that's where there are some fairly dramatic swings, and I just wanted to kind of at least share with the committee and kind of bring to their attention. The first one there is property taxes. Obviously, that's our major source of revenue, that's 85% of our revenues. And, you know, all the dollar amount there, about $1 million, I mean, that is significant. You will see that when you're looking at the five-year projection there. But really, that's attributed to this kind of unique CPI environment that we're living right now. Obviously, the Fed is trying to tame inflation, keep, you know, get inflation down. And so we've seen, just in the last six months, if you go back to April and we were looking at our March CPI, that number was 3.5%. When we look at it now, where we stand here in October, that number is 2.5%. I mean, it's gone down by a percent. And so just that one little change, when you put that into the projection, and then it changes our 2024 CPI, which changes our 2024 levy, which then impacts our fiscal year '26 numbers, which are compounded, I mean, you end up, that one little number causes a million-dollar drop in our revenues. And so that, you know, for a while there, we were in a pretty stable CPI environment, but now we're starting to see some swings, and so that's impacting the projection. The other piece is, and I've mentioned this in a number of prior meetings, is that right now, we're getting really good interest income on our fund balances. When we were looking at this back in April, rates were at 5%, and now they've dropped down to 4%. And so that's a, what, a 20% drop in just six months? Obviously, the Fed has started to cut rates, and so those interest rates are going to start to go down. Now, they didn't go down, they didn't fall quite as quickly as we were initially anticipating, so when you actually look at the interest earnings from one projection to the next, there's a little bit of an increase. But even that slight change in them not dropping as fast, you know, that created another million dollars of revenue in the projection. A big area that we've benefited from over the last few years is corporate personal property replacement tax receipts. That's what's provided by the Illinois Department of Revenue. It was a replacement tax when they used to have taxes on personal property, and now it flows through the business income taxes. And so the state actually distributed too much money. They didn't account for something in their calculation, and so school districts got this huge influx of CPPRT receipts, which is great. I mean, it's in our, you know, we've used it, it's in our fund balances. But the year we just finished, we actually saw a 35% drop in those receipts. It went from 1.2 million, I think, down to 750,000. And then, based on the most recent estimates from the Department of Revenue, that's going to go down even further. So we're projecting another 30% drop, and so that impacts our projection by just over $1 million. The federal grants is a little bit different. Obviously, we've seen the S.R. money and the American Rescue Plan, the ART money over the last few years. That money is now tapering off. In fact, the last S.R. payment we just got in this fiscal year. But some of those funds, we ended up using for things that would typically be covered by some of our other grants, and so those grants now have some carryover dollars. And so those carryovers have been factored into our projection, and so that's why we're seeing a little bit more in that area over the next five years. So again, there's these things that are changing, that are a little bit unique, S.R. funds, then they go away, interest rate changes, CPI. And so we are, we are seeing some fluctuations in individual items, but overall, it's still about the same over the five-year period. Turning to expenditures, it's a little bit of a different story. Inflation, obviously, it's been very high. It's been high for a few years here, and that's impacted our expenditures a little bit more significantly. You're probably feeling this just in your own household budgets, like you go to the grocery store. It's not what it used to cost. It's a lot more expensive. Kind of all your day-to-day items, those costs have really increases, and obviously, schools are not immune to that. We've talked about that in past presentations. And so overall, you know, when we look at some of those changes, the expenditures are about $2 million higher over the next five years. And that's also taken into account where we ended this past fiscal year and what we're looking at and what we put into the budget for the current fiscal year. And so when we look at that top item, obviously, we had an estimate, we had an assumption for where we thought salaries would land. We went through the negotiation process with the teachers, we looked at all of our comps, we compared to them. And ultimately, in order to stay competitive and stay on par with the other districts in the area, those raises ended up being a little bit higher than we were projecting back in April, and so that's been factored into this most recent projection. In terms of transportation costs, you know, we continue to get those bills in, they continue to climb. A lot of that's the result of additional special education students that were required to provide transportation. We don't have a choice in that, it's mandated. We've had a significant increase in homeless transportation costs, and even though we went out to bid, we've got, you know, a new rate from a new provider, those costs are still going up. And so this year, we just finished, we saw another increase. Obviously, we're projecting a similar increase for this budget. And so those get put into this projection, and they flow through the entire thing and they compound on themselves, and so we start to see some of these million-dollar increases in our costs. Tuition and fees, again, I think Keith did a presentation recently where we looked at some of those student counts, and I think we were at about 49 or 50 in 2023, and then in 2024, that number jumped to 55. And when you're paying 40 to $50,000 a year to educate those students, because we can't educate them, the needs are more than we can handle here, so we have to outplace them, and we're just seeing those costs rise. And so, you know, whether those trends will continue, that remains to be seen. You know, Keith will talk a little bit more here on the next slide about, you know, what happens if we see those trends continue? What next? What do we do at that point? And so with that, I'll let Keith kind of touch on that piece.
This is an unusual presentation. Usually, year number four or five is where you start to see a decline, but at our organization, revenue versus expenditure is always tight. We're usually about spending 95% of what our revenue is, and so there's only kind of a 5% chance that things can change and not go into deficit spending. I don't think in my time here, I know for sure Dave's time here, we've ever brought to you a deficit plan, but this is why we look at it every six months. We don't think there's anything that we should be doing differently right now, but we want to keep looking at this every six months, because when we look at 2026 as a balanced budget with $372,000 if all assumptions hold true, 2027 is where we start to see it dip. And so we need to keep an eye on CPI, we need to keep an eye on interest rates, see if corporate personal property taxes have flattened out at all, but that's really all we can do for revenue. That is pretty much out of our control for the most part. Where we can control things are the expenditures, and so we will be looking at the next couple of years to see if these projections hold true. Again, you saw how much they changed just in the last six months, and so I don't want to overreact by something that might happen in the next five years. And so we'll look at it, we will give you updates every six months, but if it starts to look like we're trending towards not being able to bring you a balanced budget, we may need to have some conversations about what we do with salaries and benefits. I mean, that makes up close to 80% of what we spend, and so we have contract already in place with the teachers for the next three years. And so after that contract, we can look at where CPI is and re-figure out whether or not we're still competitive within the market relative to also what we can afford, and then also benefits. But those may be hard conversations, but I also don't want to have them too far in advance. If everything in this present projection holds true, our fund balance policy says we want to have a minimum of three months. We also don't want to have more than six months. Even if all this holds true, we're at 100 days, which is beyond that 90 days. And so I wouldn't call this worst-case scenario, but if all of these play out, we're still right in line with our balance, our fund balance policy. But again, we would want to start to make changes about two years from now to make sure that if we are going to flip expenditures over revenue, let's try and diminish that as much as possible to even have more money within our fund balances. Dave and I often feel like we bring this so often, it seems like the future is dim and gray, and then variables out of our control continue to change. Some of them are lucky, some of them are planned, but we do think we are solid for the next three years, but we need to start looking next year whether or not this kind of odd dip is the new trend. When you look back on the last 10 years, every single year, we have a balanced budget by close to $2 million. And so when I look at 20 years of close to $2 million in the black, I keep thinking like, is this the time? But I just feel like we, there are just so many variables that are changing so fast. There's nothing to happen today, but the trends look like we're starting to see a possible deficit. Anything to add? So we will bring you another update in six months. By then, we'll have new information about what CPI is. We'll see if interest rates have decreased the way that we're projecting based on the Fred's choices. We will continue to look at enrollment. As Dave pointed out earlier, a big part of our budget is special education. It's not to blame those students, but typically, when you have a student who has needs outside of what we can do internally, either we have them at SASID or a private placement. On average, that's about a $50,000 per student, and that's a different conversation when you have a regular ed teacher. You pay their salary, and they may very well have a class of 22 and can spread that cost. You pay their salary, and they may very well have a class of 22, and can spread that cost over 22 students, but when you have a special needs student, oftentimes, you have a one-on-one teacher, and you also have a lot of OTPT, you have additional transportation, because generally, you need to take them to either the private placement, and so we're not trying to play, lay blame, but right now, about $3 million of our budget is specifically targeted for special ed students, and it's something we can't control. They come to us, sometimes new, sometimes they've been here for many years. We have a team of people evaluating as to whether we can meet their needs in-house, and at this point, I think we had, correct me if I'm wrong, about 50 students, about half of them going to SACID, half of them to private placement. The costs for either one of those are very similar, but that's something we can't change, but we need to take into consideration when we look at those expenditures and how they are continuing to increase over time. And the other thing, as Dave pointed out, transportation. There was a swing in the market where they just couldn't find drivers, and so as a result, we've kind of had to overcompensate to be able to bring wages more in line, to be able to meet demand. And so those increases are probably in the 20-some percent increase from the prior year, partially because of COVID, partially because of a lack of even having a pool to pull from. And then in addition to that, Dave has done a great job really digging in to make sure we can minimize the number of routes that we have, but it's another one of those variables that's somewhat out of our control. So we'll keep you posted on what it looks like every six months. We'll come to you with ideas, but at this point, it is really just our first time, or I should say, our second time, because the six-month one was very similar, that a lot of variables are changing really quickly that we need to keep our eye on so that we don't get caught off guard later. And if we do need to dig out of a financial hole, we have a three-year plan to do it and don't have to abruptly do something quickly that would negatively impact students.
Any further questions? All right, thank you very much, that was a great presentation. All right, so item eight, we move on to the quarterly financial update for September 2024. That information can be found under item eight of the finance committee packet. Once again, Mr. Wilkinson.
Once again. Hopefully, you had a chance to read through the written report that's in the finance packet over the weekend. Just a few items I wanted to point out, I know we have a few minutes here left before we have to go to the next meeting. Interest earnings appear to be trending a little bit higher than our budget. My hunch on that one is that, you know, a lot of the rates for the investments maturing earlier in the year are at kind of the 5% range, and so we're seeing a little bit more of that interest maybe front-loaded in the year as we get further through the year, and some of those investments that mature towards the latter part of the year, those will be at more of a 4% range. And so I think, I think we're still going to end up ahead of budget once we get to the end of the year, but I think it's not going to be as far ahead of budget as it is at this point in the year right now. Federal sources is, if you look at that number, it's also ahead of our budget at this time of the year. That's really attributed to the fact that we received our final ESSR payment during the first quarter, and so those funds are all now received and expended, and so the remainder of the year will put us back towards what we are budgeting for our federal revenues. Salaries and benefits are in line with budget and consistent with the prior fiscal year at this point, which is great. On the purchase services side, as we just talked a little bit about in our last agenda item, that is about $200,000 over, I guess, it's $225,000 higher than this period last year. So when we look at this year versus the year before, we are seeing a little bit of an increase there. Couple items that are contributing to that is, one, our SACID costs. When we pay medical aids that are needed for students, those used to be included in the tuition costs of the program, but those have now been separated and are considered a purchase services. We're basically hiring the services of this aid to work with our students, and so that's been shifted to this area where it used to be in tuition in the past. The other piece is, you know, Keith talked a little bit about in terms of transportation and the rising cost of salaries and wages. We're also seeing that in the repairs and maintenance work that we have to outsource to various vendors as things need work, like HVAC units, inspections, those kinds of services, those costs seem to be getting higher. When we get those bills in, it's like, wow, is anything less than $1,000 anymore? And then we also had, over at our elementary school, we had some troubleshooting that needed to be done on some of the units that provide air conditioning to 12 of our classrooms on, I guess it's the north side, trying to troubleshoot where that problem was, and so we had some teachers that were very warm for a few of those days, I think it was late August or early September, and so we incurred some additional costs to have some contractors come out and try and troubleshoot that and figure it out. So we're seeing some increases there with our repairs and maintenance costs, and so that's kind of contributing overall to being higher this year than we were in the past years, or in last year. Capital outlay, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, but obviously, the $4 million is related to our junior high renovations. And then we also touched on SACID tuition. If you read the write-up, we actually, we were still reviewing, still processing some of those payments that we typically make to SACID in the first quarter. We actually, those are included on the October bills right now, and so when you include all those payments into what we've had so far this year, we're actually trending about $100,000 higher at this point with our tuition costs than we were last year. So we'll continue to monitor that, we'll continue to keep a close eye on that, and hopefully, we'll end up falling more in line with budget as the year moves on. Again, this is, this is the first quarter review, we're only three months into the fiscal year. It's always hard to kind of glean what the trends are when you're only three months into the year, but obviously, as we get to the second quarter and third quarter, we'll have a better picture of where the district stands and how we're doing relative to the budget. And so I didn't receive any questions from the committee over the weekend, but if there are any additional items, any additional questions, we have a few minutes before we need to adjourn.
Dave, no additional questions on that, but I just want to thank you for, under the financial projection, I should have said it under item seven, but the what has changed, those charts, extremely helpful, and I'm sure you devoted all weekend to it, I'm sure, but I think that was a very strong analysis for the projections, so thank you for doing those.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry you are seeing it for the first time here tonight, but hopefully, it helped kind of understand what we're seeing in terms of some of those trends within our projection. So thank you, Pam.
All right, well, it's good to see that attendance has improved since the meeting began. All right, so, item nine, are there any future agenda topics for the next finance meeting? Any additions? No? All right, excellent. All right, with that, I would like, with no other agenda items, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. So that's Ms. Almond and Ms. Foster. All right, all in favor? Those opposed? Excellent, it's good to close with consensus. Thank you very much, everyone.